Good morning, welcome to the Dearborn County Board of Commissioners meeting April 2nd, 2024. If you please rise and join me in the place of leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and to do it with liberty and justice for all her citizens.
As a recipient of federal funds and in support of Dearborn County's efforts to ensure nondiscrimination and equal access to all citizens, the county gathered statistical data regarding attendance and county activity. Therefore, we have provided a voluntary Title VI public involvement survey at this meeting. You are not required to complete this survey, however, the form is anonymous and will be used solely for the purpose of monitoring our compliance with Title VI and ADA.
Thank you, Andrew. New business, still for resolution regarding building codes, it's Sanders?
Uh, yes, so we had these resolutions with all, most of the cities and towns there for a while, but once planning and zoning took over and started, uh, we did interlopals for planning and zoning services. We wrapped the building department stuff in with that. With Deelbro hiring Derek Walker and his, uh, prior experience in planning and zoning, they did notify the county that they were going to terminate our interlokal, but they would like to retain Bill Shelton's services as the building inspector. So, uh, by Indiana Code thirty-six dash seven dash eight dash seven, that's done. Uh, when it's, when we're just talking about building apartment, um, rather than the need interlokal, it can actually just be done by resolution, which then has to be accepted, um, by the county. So this is a Deelbro resolution that you would be then voting to accept.
Questions, Mr. Cruz? All right, uh, Mr. Cruz, motion to approve the Deelbro resolution regarding building codes, it's Sanders? Presented by Mr. Biden, Mr. Cruz. Second, long chair.
Right.
Motion, Sanders. New business update on workforce development?
Good morning.
Good morning, Andrew Kurt.
Keggers, don't worry about it. We don't take it too personally.
Okay, I got you. Don't worry about it, partner.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Brooke Keggers. I'm the executive director of the Southeast Indiana Workforce Investment Board. Uh, we oversee ten counties and help provide workforce services. Um, there's a map on the back of the ten counties we serve. Um, generally, when I come around, those people don't know what a workforce investment board is. Is it okay if I provide a brief overview of what we do?
Go ahead.
The short of it is, the government understands that investing in people and investing in workforce development is a good idea. It's a program that pays for itself. If you help people get jobs, if you help people get off of public services, they pay more taxes, everyone wins. Thankfully, the government was also, in this case, learned enough to know that you've not want Washington or Indianapolis telling you what the employers of Southeast Indiana want with workforce. So what they did is they created a law that creates workforce boards in every community. The governor broke the state up into pieces. In this case, there's Blue Genon is our piece, the head counties we're in. And then they designated a workforce investment board. So I am a nonprofit director that runs a nonprofit organization. That's job is to try to help solve the talent challenges of Southeast Indiana. My board is made up primarily of employers, local employers, who are instructing us on what they need, what they want, and we've got key partners like IB Tech, Boebre, HAB, Economic Development, et cetera, around the table. As long as that board is in good standing, we keep our nose clean, we get some federal money, but then our job has been to raise more money to run programming, to help with whatever the challenges are in Southeast Indiana. Go figure, our chief elected official is actually Mayor Malone. Mayor Malone's been doing this now for several years and oversees our work. We've put a lot of them really good, cool stuff together. Generally speaking, we are a system that's here to serve the public, it's here to serve you guys, it's here to sort of your employers, but, uh, we always have kind of meetings and we welcome people to come. A lot of folks don't know where we are, don't know what we do, so I figured I would come around and I'm talking to all the county commissioners, kind of remind you who I am and what I do and share my contact information. Uh, the short of the talent situation, as you guys know, is you have to go back to either Vietnam War or World War II for a talent crisis to be as pronounced as it right now. There's not enough workers. We know that, we know you're hearing that from everyone. That's been the case for the ten years that I've been doing this. In those ten years, the nature of the public workforce system has changed dramatically. In the old days, it used to be you sit in the employment office, someone needs a job, they knock on your door, find out what they need, you give them some training, you give them a job. No one's knocking on the door anymore. Anyone who wants to work is working, and so now the game is, well, what do you do if there's not enough workers? So we spend all of our time, the best of our time, sending our crew out into the community, finding people who aren't working, who could be working, should be working. That's the name of the game now. One of the most promising things we're doing specifically in this community is the JAG programs, Jobs for America's Graduates, I'm not sure if you're familiar with it. Um, Carl, Carl has been a huge advocate for that in the high school space. That is a classroom where we send one of our staff members into the school, and it's a proper class, like any other class, like math or English, every day, uh, throughout the course of the year. And we have forty kids that for one reason or another are kind of labeled as needing a little bit extra support. That person is not a teacher, she's a case manager, whose job is to say, hey kiddo, how's it going? What's going on with your life? What do you need? What's going to help you get to the finish line? Not only do we work with them for that year, in some cases, two years, but then after they graduate, we follow them for a full year after they leave high school to make sure that they get somewhere. Or you can either go into higher end, or you go into military, or you go into a job, and give them the supports they need, maybe the supports their family needs, just to make sure that they get there. Uh, our data on that program is phenomenal. Those kids who presumably have some challenges are graduating, uh, at a higher rate and succeeding more than the, every other kid in, in the program. And it's a program that pays for itself because of the extra investment, keeping these kids on the straight and narrow. Uh, not only have we run that program down in Orangeville for years, but actually just here in January, you guys have a second program now in the Orangeville High School. Um, we have a program in South Dearborn as well, for that program, um, for what it's worth. Um, we now, the governor has asked us to double that program. We had ten of these things just recently. We're probably going to have closer to twenty-one of these programs in those ten counties, um, uh, here in the near future. Um, other work we're doing is specifically related to, we do a lot of work with the ex offender population. We go into jail systems, get people their HSC, get them their GED. In some cases, we're going into Madison Prison, getting women jobs before they leave, so they're actually working. So it's not even about a clean transition after they leave, it's like they're already working, so there is no transition until they leave. Uh, and then also, we're doing a lot with recovery initiatives, people that have struggled with substance use and, and need some support. We find that you can throw a lot of time and energy at, at some of these populations, and it's a waste of taxpayer dollars. We find that if we go to and work with those training providers, who work with the, the prison systems, who work with recovery systems, and have them send us their best and brightest, that they're invested in, those people do great. And we love building bridges for those folks and connecting them to employers that understand, and that's how we move the needle in a difficult talent crisis. Beyond that, uh, we're trying to diversify dramatically. Government funding is never, uh, is never enough, and so we're always trying to do other things. We've raised over quarter million dollars of money from the private sector specifically to do this kind of work, help them find workers in different ways, uh, always better when the private sector's paying for it. And then, um, also, we're diversifying our portfolio, so we're not just getting workforce dollars in the traditional sense. In the last six months, we've gotten over a million dollars from three completely unfunded. We're getting family and social services money, so that's social service dollars. We're getting mental health dollars, which is crazy for a workforce board, but we're getting mental health dollars specifically to deal with addiction. And then we're also got some funding from the commissioner of higher ed specifically to help connect more students to employers, because that's what we do. So, um, in short, I just wanted to reconnect with you guys, let you know I'm here to serve you guys. As you guys are hearing from your employers, they need workers, they need, you know, need ideas, et cetera. Anytime you're working on big projects, you're doing ready grants and things like that. We work in my purple bird all the time. If it's any of that kind of stuff that you need assistance with, we are here to serve you. And again, I, I hope, I want to make clear, I don't work for the government, I work to you guys. So let me know what you need and what you're hearing, and, um, I'm a resource anytime I need it. And then beyond that, Mayor Malone is actually oversees all of our work right now, and so you're in very good hands. We make sure Dearborn County did their, their, their best.
I hear the connection to the high schools and people coming out of incarceration. What's your connection with IB Tech?
IB Tech's on my, IB Tech is on my board, and, and so we work like this. Now, I guess the, the thing I would, I would say, and I think it's important, is we are an independent agency who, my job is to serve the employers and to serve job seekers. And so we are kind of an independent, our order of these things. So if someone comes in and they need help, and IB Tech's got a great program, I'll send them to it. If it's maybe not the best program, I'll send them someone else. So I'm not beholden to any particular player, which I think is good, because it makes sure that I'm giving really good sound advice. So IB Tech's a great partner, we've done great things. We also run the Work One offices, there's one in the, uh, the Lakefront campus that's actually co-located with IB Tech. But generally, the, the short of it is those offices, they're still there to help people, but, um, we always let people know that, uh, right now, workforce development, very few people are coming to the office looking for help, there's this, that was a different age.
And how do your metrics, your measurement of work, either success? Or how is that, how do you measure that?
Anytime, as you, as you know, anytime you're getting government money, there's all kinds of strings attached. So we've got a very clear set of federal measures that we give, but every program we give, we get state money and we get private sector money. Every single one has its own rubric in, in state performance. All that's public information, and so anything you guys want to see, we're happy to program. You want to see, hey, what are your outcomes? We, we're constantly being audited and monitored, et cetera, to make sure that we're being good stewards. And after ten years, we're, we're really good at this, we keep our nose clean, we do good work. So never afraid, anyone who wants to look into this stuff is welcome to poke around, ask questions. If you want to be doing more, why is this not happening here? That's what we're here for. Uh, for what it's worth, we do, twice a year, we have a local elected officials meeting where we call everyone from those ten counties. Very few people tend to attend. Uh, I hear that that's a compliment, because it means that there's nothing on fire, which is good. But for what it's worth, you're welcome to attend. So I don't know who is designated amongst the three, okay? So if you probably see those, we have board meetings every other month. You're welcome to come to any of our board meetings, you're welcome to wait for the Leo meetings, you're welcome to just talk to Mayor Malone and see how things are going, or call me anytime. But, uh, again, this is just one of those things, we're trying to let people know you've got one of the most aggressive and successful of the eastern state. We're the smallest in terms of our funding, our funding comes from unemployment rates. And go figure, our unemployment rates, Southeast, you're right, but in Southeast Indiana, we've got Cummins, we've got Honda, we've got robust employment, so we, our funding is down sixty percent in the ten years we do this. That's because the federal government says, well, if you don't have job seekers, you don't have a problem. Well, tell any of our employers that they don't have a problem right now, it's just a broken idea. We're doing our best to educate some folks in Washington about fixing that, because at some point, if you get below five percent unemployment, your employers are hurting. The, those employers are my bosses, and they're demanding more and more and more of us. I mean, innovative stuff, new ideas, find talent, find talent. The funding gets worse and worse and worse. So the good news is we've already pivoted and are finding money in other ways. The youth work in particular is going very well. I noticed that the JAG program is not in the Southern Dearborn schools. We are, Rising Sun is on, we're talking with them, they haven't signed on yet. Right now, it's giving points to East Central and Rising Sun are the only two holdouts, perhaps in the entire region, at least in terms of public schools. And so, to be clear, the governor is bending over backwards. This is a program he wants to be his legacy. He's given funding, given funding. My job is to make sure Southeast gets as much of this funding as possible. Uh, and as it stands, they're the only two holdouts. Columbus was a holdout for years, we just got Columbus signed up, they're going to have programs in 2025. So for what it's worth, if anyone has any connections there, I know we're talking Friday. I want to say we haven't had any luck with East Central. If anyone has any connections, let us know. This is a program that's very easy to sell. You're helping kids, it's a beautiful thing, and for people that have a bleeding heart, it's easy sell. If you're an ROI person and you're just talking about taxpayer dollars and ROI with investment, this is a great program too. Because honestly, you've nudge a kid, uh, helped him stay on, on the line, uh, that kid's going to make over quarter million dollars over his lifetime, he's going to pay more taxes, but he's also not getting federal benefits. About two hundred thousand dollars of federal benefit that person will not use if they can finish high school. And so that's just the program that pays for itself.
Is there anything else?
Appreciate you guys trying to.
Do you need a card?
No, I got a question for you. Why are those that are unemployed not seeking jobs?
So that's a real good question. I know for, for a couple of years there, when this first call hit, people were saying, oh, it's because of the COVID stimulus checks and things like that, and maybe, maybe that wasn't the case for a while. My background of all things is in gerontology, which is a really weird thing to have a master's degree in. But basically, the major thing that's happening is this demographic shift. The boom is a sheer numbers game. The boomers retired, we were not ready for the boom, or they're retiring. We were not ready for that retirement, but then COVID accelerated it. COVID brought it about two, three years earlier than anticipated. So there's a sheer numbers problem that is really the underlying issue there. There are way too many people that could be working, should be working, that are not. Yeah, and that, that's a trick to your proposition, it depends, I think, it's a multifaceted problem. I'm certainly welcome if you come to a board meeting, because we've got these kinds of.
I'd like to answer that.
Yeah, that, that's good. Um, the, if you want the real, the real secret, uh, I've been doing it for ten years, is there's a fundamental mismatch from the world that, uh, young people in particular are exposed to and the kind of job opportunities that we have. So I think the technology has gotten to the point that the young person is looking at the world in all of its glory and all of its horror, and, and trying to reconcile that, and then is presented with a job and doesn't understand how that job relates to them, doesn't understand how that relates to their success, et cetera. It's just a disconnect. I think they're overstimulated, and they have a hard time getting motivated to just climb a ladder. And, and as we know, when you're young, you see you climb a ladder and start doing stuff, and that's your pathway into the universe. I, I find young people in particular are overwhelmed. Beyond that, I mean, the, the realities of government dependency is a major issue. There are people that are on benefit that will lose benefits if they start working, and, and eventually that pays off, but it's a long road, and that's a huge disincentive for people. Well, it's like, okay, you're on food stamps right now, if you start working and you get a part-time job, you're going to lose those food stamps, in which case you're breaking even and you're working harder. It's a, it's a really dumb setup. So there's a disincentive built into some of how the, the benefits are done. Now, that being said, I know if they keep working, they can move well past benefits, and they can earn lots of money, and they can be providing, et cetera, but explaining that roadmap to them is getting a little bit hump. The other things that are happening include like the cost of childcare, transportation, fundamental things like that. Right now, we're working with a lot of our local elected officials. In Greensburg right now, we're talking with employers about setting up childcare stuff, because there's simply not enough childcare, and it's very, very expensive. And so we've got large employers that can't even afford to do it on their own, and how is a small employer supposed to do that? And we've already done, uh, we've seen reports that say, if you have more childcare, if you have more transportation, there's people that are willing to work. Uh, we paid a, for a transportation pilot in Jennings County, where they found a group of workers living in an RV complex, and they paid for a bus to go pick them up. And it showed up, there was ten extra workers there, but they didn't have the transportation thing. So some of those fundamental things are the barriers. Right now, it is unfortunately, there's not a silver bullet to solve them at all, but it's basically, we have to identify those barriers from one line and knock them down. That's basically where we're at. If I can help with anything, just let me know, we're here for you, thank you.
Okay, so Water Conservation District, can I, MS4, Water Quality Management, find it, Kayla?
Kayla Dick, Stormwater Coordinator, so I have just a few NS4 updates for you. The first one is we have a new NS4 coordinator, Sandy Whitehead over there.
Who's Sandy?
And then the other thing is the Stormwater Quality Management Plan I sent out, which I've all had a chance to go to that. I'll hand you guys, I'll print out some card calls. It's both of them. Um, so this is a requirement for the NS4 permit, and this is sort of an outline for us in the county how we're going to meet the requirements of the permit. This is a plan that can change, but it is something that we are required to have at all times, it's something you guys will be required to adopt and certify. And everybody that's in the plan, Highway Department, Planning and Zoning, Health Department, they've all been notified and are part of the plan. You guys are good with it, and you guys have to vote to adopt it, and then there's a certification.
This is due with all this, Dennis?
Yes.
This is due by April 12th, so this was your last meeting prior to that date. Next step will be the ordinance, which I've reviewed from a technical standpoint, or form writing standpoint. I know Kayla and Dennis and Nicole have looked over from as far as the actual bones of it. However, Allison and Rob with OHM are waiting more guidance on the ordinance. They did have some questions to hide, but that's not due until July.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're good to sign this?
Yeah, so this is the Stormwater Quality Management Plan, which is April 12th. The ordinance and the technical standards aren't actually until July.
Okay, Mr. Goodman, motion to certify, certification of Stormwater Quality Management Plan is presented by Ronald Dick. Second, long favor.
All right.
Motion, Sanders. Okay, next up under, uh, Stormwater is Program Activity Updates by John Cruz, Board of Supervisors.
I'm John Cruz, Dearborn County Stormwater, and also the Regional Director for the State of Indiana, for our seventh Southeastern Indiana year. Uh, hey, my name is about our native plant sale, it's going on until May the third. Uh, also, we're giving a tree gift away on April 26th, from nine to one, at the Bright Meadows Park, and we, we asked for donations, our food pantry, our cash, which we turn over to the park board. Um, and then also we have a rain barrel workshop going on, launched for June 18th. Uh, March the 19th to the 21st, I was in Washington DC with two other people from Indiana Stormwater Districts. Uh, we met with our congressmen and congresswomen, our staff of, of the congressmen, and we discussed, uh, getting the farm bill passed, uh, importance of funding for the stormwater conservation, and, and also, uh, protection of our natural resources. Also, issues was Proposition 12 in California, and how, uh, Massachusetts passed a rule here in the last election that regulates how farmers raise their crops and livestock. And, uh, we cannot have every state making rules, different rules, regulations on how to do it. This should be interstate commerce controlled, and so, uh, they're working on doing some of those rules and regulations, some centers were aware of that, and so all the words coming out, but hoping they can pass something so that every state can regulate what we do. Their California can't tell us how to regulate our crops. They want to regulate it, they regulate it for their state, but not for the rest of, of the country. We're seeing the same problems in transportation and also in the medical field. We're, states are trying to tell the whole country what to do. One of the big issues here in Indiana, I'm a bit aware of, is Lee, that's the water project. It's going on between Pup yet, and then how, so we want to pump a huge amount of water out of Wall Base River area, bring it down to Indianapolis, and so that's, uh, an ongoing thing right now up in that area, and it will affect us long-term in Indiana and our area too. Indiana needs to take an inventory of our water supplies for either in-ground and above-ground, and then we need to create a regulatory system, like you do out west, so that, uh, we can control our water and who, how, how we use it and so forth. And that's something that we'll probably see in coming in near future. You got any questions?
Questions?
You had your, uh, Daniel dinner, how did that go?
I was not attending that, I missed that, and so, I was, I was out of town for that week, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Liston, County Engineer.
I'm Liston County Engineer. It is everybody probably well aware of right now, uh, State Road One at the intersection of Mount Pleasant Road will be closed on or after the fifteenth of April. Uh, with that being said, uh, the Mount Pleasant Road, Mount Pleasant will be completely shut down as well as State Line Road on each side of Mount Pleasant, so, uh, you will not be able to get past north of Pribble unless you live north of Pribble, or south of York Ridge unless you live south of York Ridge. It'll be open to the locals, you can do them from their houses, but through traffic will be restricted, uh, both on State Road One and on Mount Pleasant Road. With that being said, uh, we would like to use a temporary truck restriction to prohibit the trucks from using semi-trucks greater than forty feet on Salt Fork Road and Georgetown Road during closure. Uh, it's very similar, we did when the state closed, uh, State Road One north of Sawton Ridge. The other year, we did same restrictions on Sawton Ridge, as well as restriction on, uh, York Ridge Road to limit semi-traffic. So our signs say no through traffic, or no through trucks greater than forty feet. Uh, we plan on using the same signs, if you approve, we put on most York Ridge or both Salt Fork, as well as Georgetown during closure.
Okay, are you going to put some signage before they get onto Route One, so that they don't get all the way up?
The state has signage and message boards for State Road One. We will, will do is on State Road One itself, we will put signage up at the intersection, basically on the advanced warning side road signs that are there presently on State Road One. Our signs will go underneath of their signs, like we did last time, and then add a sign on Georgetown, as well as Salt Fork, uh, warning trucks as they come up, if they come on State Road One. But they are, they are shown on the interstate replacing message boards that State Road One is closed, so hopefully they will not get up there, because the state has already warned them that State Road One is already closed. Pribble Road is already restricted to trucks, that's why we're not putting our signs there. There's already existing signs on Pribble Road, uh, which doesn't really help you a whole lot trying to go around the closure, uh, but there are signs already on Pribble and ties are restricting, uh, trucks on the roads.
Okay, what about the roads you're restricting? I mean, you have signage up, but you know how that goes, the trucks are.
That's right, I was going to, I was going to ask the sheriff if he wanted me to shoot him an email when we're done, so he can pass on to his deputies as far, so they know like what the citation is and the fraction and whatnot.
Enforce it.
That'd be great, because you know how signs work.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, I remember you, we had to send, we had to send people up to Sawton Ridge when we did this last time.
Right, right.
I'll, I'll shoot the email, an email to the sheriff.
We had barricades, so cars couldn't get through, trucks couldn't.
We, we did not last time, though.
I thought we did on Sawton Ridge, but obviously.
Did we do that? I didn't have, I didn't have barricades, because, because it wasn't actually closed on there. It just started, because of the liability, people going around barricades. Didn't have a barricade somewhere.
Did we have barricades up? What's that? Did we have barricades up on Sawton Ridge? I thought we did. Uh, okay, for sure. Well, I noticed, there, you know how that goes with signs.
I understand. That's why we're trying to put a vote, we're going to have.
I was going to throw the barricades off the road to do the sign. We should have a fortune on barricades.
So, but no signs on State Road One prior, as well as on the intersection itself. And then on the State Line, and they'll have, we'll have signs as well.
Okay, so on the, uh, on the reroutes, our roads are damaged, what obligation does the state have?
We get to pick a location, we get to pick one route as the unofficial detour. Our unofficial detour uses Georgetown and, uh, State Line Road and North Dearborn Road. That is the unofficial detour. If they go on other roads, the law says they give us, they give us one road to pick. Tim's crew will, uh, if they go out and do maintenance work on those roads related to the additional traffic, then I can, then if he keeps track of it.
We store all those, all those.
They, they have two-day cards every day, they take back where they work, whatever, we'll go back through the cards.
Turn it in.
Work came, then I can file claims to the state to get reimbursement, which is like we did at the end when they did the closure on Forty-Six, I think we got like thirty-some thousand dollars back for Feller. And that's very not worked through that closure. So there is a procedure, the problem is you only get to pick one route. So that's already been picked and signed with the state on the agreement, which is Georgetown, State Line, and North Dearborn Road.
Okay, I just wanna make sure all those things were in place.
We have all those in place.
Okay. Yeah, we tracked everything, our hours, if there's extra hours, whatever.
Truck, material, everything gets lumped in.
It's kind of like a FEMA thing, you just send it back to them. Okay, I just wanna make sure the counties cover. They probably check on it eventually, they think.
Right now, I would say, what is the week before Thanksgiving?
Thanksgiving's on November 28th.
So, what was that brought in for? January 29th? We'll do the November. In our resolution, or our resolution.
So the way we did this ordinance a few years ago when we needed to address Sawton Ridge, it's a simple motion out of public meaning to close the roads for a specific period of time. And then Todd or Tim can come back and ask for an extension.
That's okay, I wanted to know that.
So we would do from, starting Monday, the 15th, through the 22nd of November. They think it'll be done by December, I hope around before Thanksgiving.
All right, so we always build in the way we're going against.
You know, we can always, if we see we need to come back, then we'll come back in November and ask for an extension.
Okay. You got something for us to, oh, you don't have?
Just the motion to do a truck, temporary truck ban on Salt Fork and Georgetown roads beginning on Monday, April 8th, and continuing through Friday, November 27th.
For trucks greater than 40 people?
For trucks greater than 40 people.
So moved what Andy said.
Sorry, Andy. No?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 2023 Annual Highway Operations Report?
Each of the committees should have received one of the reports. Basically, by Indiana law, due to the size of our county, we have to, all counties have to, and then certain cities have to, based upon size, do a annual local road and street and bridges annual operation report on your receipts and expenditures for the preceding year. They said you should all receive the this year's report, that I will then submit up to LTAP.
You want to help LTAP for the flows you don't know?
LTAP is the Local Transportation Assistance Program that's run through Purdue University. It's another state law program that Indiana's required to have that allows assistance to the counties. It's kind of like our, for the highways and roads, it's our voice to try to get to the legislature. They do all the back work. So when you say you need funding, they can go back and do all the dirty work to show where the needs are, how much the funding needs are for the county, where our funds come from, and how they're expended. And this report helps them do that, because it shows exactly what funds we have available and where we spent our funds last year. Biggest takeaway in 2023 is the fact that we spent $13,027,756.61 on our roads last year. Now that's salary, that's equipment, that's fuel, that's contract work, that's a total amount of money that was disputed out of the Highway Department Local Road and Bridge Funds, Cume Bridge Funds for Dearborn County Roads and Bridges. That number again for you Christine is 1302-7756.61.
Where slips in that too?
Anything you spend money on.
Everything.
So it's, and it's, it's tax dollars that we receive through the state, through our license plates and gasoline taxes and license plate fees. It's casino funds that we get from council. It is general funds we get from council. It's any casino funds we get. It is federal grants we get. It is NRCS grants we get, or any other grants we get. Any funds that actually are expended, expended, expended towards roads and bridges in Dearborn County.
You guys were emailed that by Todd, and that's why.
So, just to give you an idea, in 2022, we spent just over 11.3 million. So we've gone up, we actually expended about 1.7 million dollars more last year than we did the previous year. And it all depends on what kind of grants we get, you know, what projects are coming up to kind of explain where we're at. So, but we are headed in a good direction. I mean, if you look at the, one of the other figures is that our common funds, which are our tax dollar funds, our dedicated highway funds, which is local road, street, Cume Bridge, MBH Restricted, MBH Non-Restrictive. That total was four point, just under 4.2 million. Through grants, casino funds, general funds, everything else, made up 8.8 million dollars. So two-thirds of our funds are not out of debt, un-dedicated highway funds. So through Tim's efforts, my efforts, and others trying to get grants, and that through the county community crossings, federal aid, NRCS, as well as council giving us the funds for, you know, for casinos or general fund, makes up almost two-thirds of the amount of funds that we spend on our highways. Because if we didn't have those funds, I don't know what you would have, because we don't come close to, the dedicated funds don't come any closer to the needs for the county.
Can you, do you have a ballpark as how much slips are costing us in that? We spend a couple million dollars every year. Up to a million. We usually spend most of our restricted, all the restricted funds on slips usually, last couple of years.
We just bought portions for two minutes out of the restricted.
Right.
So the restricted fund last year, we took in 1.6 million in restricted, with the receipts. So of the restricted, you're probably spending about a million to the road or towards slips, a little over a million. Plus, and you get some NRCS that goes in there, as well as some match funds from casino in there. So that probably makes up the 2 million of that. Again, you couldn't, you know, for 1.6, you wouldn't do much with. And we did 2 million dollars of pay with restricted.
I just know the real issue, because of the geography and.
It's southeast Indiana, it's where we live. I mean, we're not gonna get rid of around the creeks and off the hills and slip through part of Dearborn County, sad to say.
Okay.
Basically, what I would see is the approval to sign the 2023 Annual Resort. Myself and Tim are already signed it for three copies. I just need you to sign by your name on it, and then I can go ahead and upload it into the state system and be in compliance.
All right, Mr. Goodman, motion to approve the 2023 Annual Highway Operations Report.
That's all I have, unless you have any increasing requests from me.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Okay, request for support for OKI Climate Pollution Reduction Grant, Nicole Bailey, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Thank you, Nicole Bailey, Director of Planning and Zoning. This morning, I am asking for the commissioners' signatures on a support letter for OKI. They, OKI has been working on, they're a climate pollution reduction grant. I have gone to one of the steering committee meetings, and Commissioner Rick Brooks has also been involved. This is a fast-moving program, and they're, it's usually, every month there's a deadline situated with it. It is, there's a lot of money available for those grants. Any grants would range from either 2 million dollars, or at the largest grant of 5 million dollars. And they have, I've included in the packet, the draft plan that OKI has put together. OKI was looking for support letters from the 16 counties that are included with this grant program. Unfortunately, the way their due dates have come, I'm trying to get these, I received this on March 21st, their deadline for support letters, but still setting, or was it the 28th? But they still accept any additional support letters. I myself wrote a support letter as the Director of Planning and Zoning, to be able to get different counties' names into the support column for these grants. Included are, they have, OKI has put together six measures in the plan, which go for different types of programs that would help facilitate the reduction of the, for pollution. First measure is, they call it PLATE, which is Priority and Low-Income Comfortability and Efficient Dwelling Program. This is a program where the funds would be used for low-income housing to help with the appliances, for energy savings of their appliances in the homes that they have. And that would be through locals. Measure 2, Green, Get Renewables and Energy Efficient Enhancements for nonprofits and local governments. Those are to look at, really what they're looking at is even nonprofit buildings, government buildings, to help in reducing those emissions as well. Whether it be doing audits for the energy use in the buildings, to see where those, any monies can be spent to get those goals into reducing those emissions. Measure 3, Transit Ride Transforming Regional Transit Service. That's exactly what it's meant to be, is in the transportation of the OKI region. Measure 4, Clean Industry. That is Equipment Placement Program for industrial buildings, mechanicals, to help them facilitate that. Measure 5, Landfill Stream Reduction Program, that is looking into the recyclable composting, into the areas, working with County Colored Waste Districts, food rescue infrastructure. And then when you move on to Measure 6, Tree for Me, Regional Canopy Taking Root. That is really what is bound to be able to hand out trees to local governments, to residents, to increase the loss of vegetation within the high-density areas when you have more hard space than you have green space. So those are the measures that they put in place. I think some of those measures would be helpful in Dearborn County as well. And I'm looking to send the support letter to Travis Muller, who is the Regional Planning Manager through OKI, and one of the people handling the grant submission for this, and looking for all commissioners to sign the support letters. Does anybody have any questions for him?
How much are we looking at, or is that to be determined?
That's to be determined. Right now, they've got to get the plan into, for the submission on what OKI, this is OKI's plan to help facilitate those grants. So they would read, the 16 counties would then fall into one of these categories as you were requesting funds. So they're requesting, this is their plan to the federal government, to try to see how much money they can get from the federal government in the plan form, and then those meetings would be going through OKI too. So there's not a.
If it's just us telling OKI we support their plan, so that they'll include us as this moves forward with programs? It's just a dot the eye item?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, and we approve the letter and sign going forward OKI.
Okay, as presented by Keith Taylor. Okay. Please say. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Get a copy of that.
You can take it, just be in the copy.
Get me a copy of the mail, please.
When did you say that? Presenting?
I have it.
It just covers any of them.
All right, any MS contracts?
You know, they're having another meeting in August. And actually, the funds are gonna be, they're trying to get everything taken care of by next year. And the funds have to be used up by 2030. So it's actually, it's real fast paced.
So if a nonprofit has, like, somebody reach out, do we get to reach out?
Uh, first it would be, I think through planning and zoning or one of the commissioners, and then we would get through OKI, because eventually they, it'll be through the counties and then through OKI.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Butler.
Did you want to take?
No.
Well, I go. Do that first.
Okay.
I think you're all aware, there's been a group working on how to distribute some of the EMS LIFT funds that are coming in. And council did recently approve distributions to Aurora Bright, Greendale, Larnesburg, Manchester, Morse Hill, and Sunman. So we did these, we did agreements back in January to help people, at the beginning of the year, started. And then once the EMS LIFT money started coming in, the idea was that there would be a supplemental distribution. So this would be those supplemental distributions. These would basically be an addendum to the contract that we've already done with these units this year. So there's, I just didn't restate all the terms. I just drafted these as supplemental to the contracts that have already been done. Again, these are with Aurora Emergency Rescue Incorporated, the Bright Volunteer Fire Company Incorporated, Greendale Emergency Rescue Incorporated, Larnesburg Emergency Rescue Unit, Manchester Township Volunteer Fire and Rescue Incorporated, and the Morse Hill Sparta Township Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated, and then also the Sunman Area Life Squad Incorporated.
Okay, so that we are just entering into the contracts. The dollar amounts have already been approved?
Yeah, the dollar amount have been approved by council. The, let me go over here. Aurora, 506,826, Wright, 412,254, Greendale, 275,492, Larnesburg, 357,549, Manchester, 275,492, Morse Hill, 310,532, and Sunman, 70,000.
All approved by council?
Yes. From the EMS.
Right, so Mr. Brooks, motion to approve the addendums to the current EMS contracts.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye. And then in addition, this is from a different fund, this is not from the EMS LIT. The Miller York Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated and St. Leon Rural Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated have what we typically call first responders. Technically, by statute, the definition is for an emergency medical responder. These are the individuals that. These are the individuals that report, you know, if there's a car accident, they report to the site first and, and prep any injured parties while they await an ambulance. So these would be agreements with, again, Miller York Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated and St. Leon Rural Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated for emergency medical responder service. And they are each $20,000.
Thank you, Andy. Motion to approve the emergency responder distributions to Miller York Volunteer Fire and St. Leon Rural Volunteer Fire Department.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
We can sign these after the commission can be signed.
As long as you vote on it, that's fine.
Yeah.
Andy, did you print these?
Uh, Sue printed those.
We need to get Art Lou off our signature lines.
I drafted them now, I can't blame that on Sue.
We can, we can pan and take it for this, but Sue pickled this one.
Was it just on the last, was it on the first responder ones?
No.
On all? Uh, was that on the 2020?
I sampled, oh, I didn't sample, I did.
Let's take a look at, I'll do the same thing.
All right, just, uh, we want to have a discussion about the eclipse that's gonna be occurring on April 8th, 2024. Just to let people know. There've been discussions with the Sheriff's Department and also with the emergency management on, uh, on plan as to how to manage the influx of traffic at that point and also any communications that might be disrupted. We have a plan in place for that in case that if something does occur and the units need to get out. So we're in pretty good shape as far as all that is concerned. So it was brought to our attention that there will be a lot, a lot of traffic coming into the city all at one time. So we felt for the safety and well-being of the employees, we would dismiss them at noon so that they could get home and get out of the traffic. And also if they had to, uh, pick up their kids or anything like that, because I know they're gonna be on e-learning that day. If we, if we didn't do that, then they could be caught up in all kinds of traffic and not be able to meet their obligations. So that's the reasoning behind why we were, uh, allowing the, uh, the employees to go home at noon on the April 8th. Any discussion at all, Mr. Probst?
No.
Alan, you okay with everything? All right, that's just informational, that's why we're doing it. Thank you. I want to vote on that. Do you have a motion?
Motion to-
Yeah. All right, uh, motion to, to approve the dismissal of the Deerborn County, uh, or I want to say, non, uh, non-essential employees at noon on April 8th.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aight.
Motion carries. Ms. Hayden, you have anything for us?
Uh, the only thing I'd like to, to let you know that, um, Rick, you go through all the, um-
Papers?
Papers, yeah. So you'll be seeing along with the, um, Office Depot, you'll be seeing Amazon invoices come through. The state has approved Amazon business to be put on the procurement system. And now when we go into the program that we use, Spindbridge, um, the catalog will show up with Office Depot and Amazon that the employees can, can order for that.
Do you want to explain if we met with that individual about the, uh, adding the additional option for folks to go out and order stuff, you know, we're still going through a single point?
Yeah, it's a single point.
To be able to consolidate.
That was approved and used by the state of Indiana for procurement. And so, um, they use Office Depot and several different, um, catalogs that we can choose from, but we haven't been approved for other ones besides Amazon and Office Depot at this time.
Two, when our offices are making purchases, do they have to enter a different portal or somehow specify?
No, they, they go to Spindbridge, which is the central point where we go to order the, the items and the catalogs pop up, then they would choose off.
So they go through Spindbridge to get to Amazon?
To get to Amazon and takes them to Amazon. And then, once they go through the checkout process, it takes them back to Spindbridge where it generates the invoicing and stuff.
Shane, I know you do, you're a user on Amazon. So if you can have your folks kind of watch that to make sure they're using the Spindbridge staff to get to Amazon?
Okay.
Take it?
You're welcome.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Stronghold. Williams?
Yeah.
Mr. Probst's motion to approve papers?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aight.
Motion carries. Paper? Mr. Goodman, motion to approve paper?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
Motion carries. And minutes. Mr. Probst's motion to approve Deerborn County Water Commission meetings, minutes?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aight.
Motion carries.
Mr. Bonn, just, you have any thoughts?
Uh, just a quick update. I've been working with Mike Perleberg on that Stellar Pathways Resolution that they seem to have done.
Yeah.
I didn't intend to throw a wrench in anything, but the resolution was drafted like an interlocal agreement. But as you guys are well aware, because we've done a lot of them like the interlocal agreements or actual agreements, and the resolution just authorizes you to enter into the interlocal when there's certain statutory things that need to be in there. Otherwise, it requires approval from the Attorney General's office. So, again, I'm not trying to throw a wrench in anything, but he did reach out to Ogra and he said, yes, he's right. Um, and our legal's working on a new template.
Okay, that's why we pay you.
So, but, uh, Mike and I have been working on that and we'll, we'll make sure that that, I didn't hear anybody was supposed to do it when, when he came last time. So we'll make sure that that's taken care of by the things that he needs to speak to.
Which is nearly the end of April? Should be done at the next meeting? And there's no upfront? Money's returned? With this, uh, with this-
No, it's just, it's just basically, it's ultimately just a statement from local communities that they intended to-
It's an intent.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Mr. Kelly, you have something first today?
Do. Appreciate your time.
No problem.
So it's time, that time of year that I'm asking for your approval to submit our annual Indiana Department Corrections Grants. Uh, we submit three grants yearly. Typically, we submit a, a community corrections grant for $560,371, a, uh, JCAP grant for $77,725, and then a probation, intensive probation grant for $61,005. Uh, we are submitting those grants. The way the grant process works for the Indiana Department Corrections in the state of Indiana is you submit the grant applications. Those are due later this month in April. And then they come back and tell you how much you actually got for the grant. And then you have to resubmit your budget based on what you were actually approved of. Uh, this year, I'm actually submitting the grant, uh, the Community Corrections Grant for $60,000 extra to help offset the cost of insurance. One of the issues that we have because community corrections fully grant funded is the insurance cost has dramatically increased. I started, uh, I took over Community Corrections in 2013. And when I took it over, it was about $13,000 for a full-time benefits package, health insurance package. And at this time, I'm not sure of the exact dollars, but it's approximately $40,000 for a full-time family package. As you can imagine, if you have a half a million dollar grant, each family package is $40,000. It's taken up quite a bit of, um, that grant just in insurance. So I requested an extra $60,000 to help offset the insurance cost. I fully expect them to deny that. When I took over Community Corrections, we were receiving $493,736 a year. I went back as far as I could find with the paperwork that Terry, um, has kept. And, um, we have been getting $493,000 since the 19, early 1990s. And we got that all the way up until 2021. And then they gave us a 4.5% increase of approximately $20,000 to get us to the $550. Well, as you can imagine, trying to run a program on 1992 money that we were getting back then in 2024 is quite difficult. So I, I did ask for additional money this year in each one of those grants. I fully expect them to deny and give us what they've given us the last four years and approximately for the last 13 years. So that is a problem that's on our radar as well, and the cost of health insurance. Every time that goes up, every year, I panic a little bit when I had, when I talk to Leah and figure out what the health insurance is gonna cost. Because, um, I'm real fortunate right now. I have, um, a bunch of people who are either, um, single, so they're not getting, they're not married. They don't have kids yet, so they don't have that, they don't have that cost. So it is the, I think it's $11,400 for them for health insurance package. Um, I've got two individuals who are still on their parents' insurance because the new laws or whatever allows them to stay on their parents' insurance until they're, um, 26 or something like that. So that's helped offset the cost. I've got one individual who's married to another county employee, so they're on their county insurance. So, but if things change, what theoretically could happen, say all, say all of those people got married and had a kid and took on just their kid, well, my insurance cost would go to $60,000. And, and just, it just instantly goes $60,000. So that's a big, you know, that's over 10% of the grant cost right there. So anyways, what I'm asking for today is approval to submit these grant applications in the amount of, uh, for the Community Corrections Grant, in the amount of $575,371, and the, um, probation, intensive probation grant, $71,005, and, and the JCAP grant, $87,725.
These are 2025?
These are 2025 grants.
Questions? Question? All right, Mr. Probst's motion to approve the, uh, letter of support for the Deerborn County Government for the Indiana Department of Corrections, Community Corrections, and Indiana Criminal Justice reinvestment grant applications for 2025, as presented by Mr. Kelly.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aight.
These should be all paperwork for all of them.
Yes, I'll, I'll submit those to Leah.
Cause they need to find those too.
Okay. I'll have to submit the grant, the actual warrant.
Not the actual grant, the grant paperwork, we can use state work accounts, right?
Cover letter?
They created that for.
They have to, they're getting all of it too.
Okay, I'll get, I'll submit one.
Okay, thank you.
I'll get with Leah on that today.
Okay. And then maybe they can authorize them to find it outside of the meeting so it can send it in?
Thank you.
Do we want to do that, Glenn, offer a sign of the, his cover letters on his grant?
Yeah, we have the new forms that the state work account requires along the application approval. We're just, so you submit it on the other end. There's an actual form out at the audit or you use some type of, we have, we have to sign that.
We have to approve that, anything?
Yeah, because like Connie was saying, to do it outside.
To what?
Like Connie was saying about approving, approving it now.
Oh, it's ready to go.
So, my motion, uh, the, uh, three commissioners to sign the grant cover letter following the meeting.
All right, thank you.
Yep, yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Rick, Connie, Rick motion to approve signing the grant cover letter. I think after the meeting, the grant goes. Alan, second.
I'll take that. Thank you.
Okay. All right, little tribal information, if any. Public comment, if any.
My name is Stephen Gimmer. I live in Dillsborough, Indiana. And I'm here to ask a couple of questions, make a couple of statements. Since the last time I was here, I did a little bit of work digging into some things, got some information. And I don't know if you understand or not, but on November 27th, 2023, a group of individuals, many whom were not actual Dillsborough EMS Executive Boards, took it upon themselves to terminate several members of the Dillsborough EMS Executive Board. Although this meeting was not in conformance with the Dillsborough Emergency Ambulance Unit Incorporated Constitution and Bylaws, the individuals held a meeting, managed to illegitimately take control of the Dillsborough Emergency Ambulance Unit Incorporated. With the help of the Dearborn County Sheriff's Department, who by issuing a no trespassing order against the legal elected board members of the Dillsborough Emergency Ambulance Unit, called a major disruption of the union's operation. On December 4th, 2023, seven days that the Dearborn County Sheriff's Department helped install the management board to the Dillsborough EMS, that board sent a contract that was signed by those who were not legitimate part of the organization and could not legally represent the Dillsborough Emergency Ambulance Unit Incorporated or the D, uh, Dillsborough EMS. And they sent this contract to the Board of Commissioners of Dearborn County. On December 19th, 2023, our Dearborn County Commissioners signed the same contract with the people who had no authority to enter into a contract with the Dearborn County Commissioners concerning the Dillsborough EMS. The name on the contract of our government officials, ours follows, Jim Thatcher, President, Rick Probst, Commissioner, Alan Goodman, Commissioner. Why did our Dearborn County Commissioners sign a contract with people who had no authority to enter into a contract with them concerning the Dillsborough EMS?
Gentlemen, you want me to address some of this since we got brought in?
How is this disturbing?
I'm, I'm comfortable listening to the comments. I don't need a rebuttal unless you want to make a rebuttal.
Well, I think if we're getting false information, it's only fair to. So first of all, um, we didn't have any part of the removal other than after the meeting took place. A deputy was called, they presented the bylaws, they presented the meeting stuff. And a no trespass issue was ordered to Mr., help me out. Harry, where to write.
And the board.
And so-
And the board.
And the board, okay. Harry, to my knowledge, Harry was the only one, because Harry called me the next day. We talked about it. I agree with Harry, it was really more of a civil issue. One, one group's claiming they're not following the bylaws. The other group's talking, saying, no, 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 or two, no. The other group says, no, they're not following the bylaws. So I said, at this point, probably, there probably needs to be legal involved in this. We don't need to be involved in this. The, I sent an email immediately out and said, we're not enforcing any kind of trespass stuff for this kind of thing. Later got a email, I think, from Harry's lawyer, asking us to do the same thing. I explained to her, you know, what the process was, what we're doing. From that point, the very next day, we were completely hell of it. And it was, you know, for those, the groups to figure out between the files.
One point, he did that before the meeting. The no trespassing order was issued before the meeting because Harry got there an hour before the meeting. And there was three deputies there that told him he could not go in. And he, yes, there was three deputies there and we'd like to know who they were. The other point is, is that they, he called, the reason the other ones didn't show up because he called and told them not to come down because there's no trespassing law.
So I know Deputy Easter Rep was the one who issued the trespassing. I don't, I, with my, if anybody- So I know Deputy Sarek was the one who issued the trespassing, I don't, I wasn't my hands, there's anybody there, nobody ever told me that.
I know there's two in the building, one behind the building, and that's been verified by many, many people.
I'd have to look at the notes on that, I don't know why I have somebody behind the building, but.
I don't either, that's why I'm kind of a little bit upset, because there's a whole lot of things that happened.
And then the one thing he said was that it's a disruption. I think you could look by the dispatch notes, once that happened, they made more runs in that short amount of time than the other group had made, you know, for the prior few months. So I don't know that I can say that it's a disruption more than they provided, actually, ambulance service, so the ambulance wasn't leaving Aurora every day taking runs for Dillesboro.
Because of no trespassing order, they are now missing the radios, they have damaged their vehicles.
And that I can't comment.
I understand, but I'm just saying, if they didn't hit that border, that would have never happened. If that no trespassing order would have never happened, that would have never happened. And they would not be in the mess they're in, because of the order. So the people that had, that were training, no longer with them, and they have to revamp their people again.
I think that would be a far stretch to say that they were in worse shape because of planning the sheriff's order that got dropped the next day, put them in bad shape, that's like, I mean, I think it's, this goes without saying, they've been in bad.
They've been in trouble, it's great, but then Harry just took over before all this happened. And he is changing it, and he is, and he was working on getting people in. I went dug into their minutes and looked into them and see what they were going.
I just want to address those things that were incorrect, please.
No problem. But it still makes me wonder why the Dearborn County Commissioners signed that contract and with someone that wasn't there, that shouldn't have been there. And we know on, on a letter dated December 14, 2023, was sent by Liz Elizabeth God, an attorney hired by the legitimate corporate board to the Dillesboro Emergency Ambulance Unit Incorporated, to one Jason Willoughby, that outlined why he was not authorized being charged of the Dillesboro Emergency Unit Incorporated, and was advised to step aside and let the authorized board resume their duties. There's a letter dated January 11, 2024, from Jason Willoughby, the one who entered into the illegitimate contract with the Dearborn County Commissioners, stating he is resigning from the Dillesboro EMS, which also states he was dropping a trespass order against Harry, the only authorized captain and an authorized board member of the Dillesboro Emergency Ambulance Incorporated. That's one of the reasons why I questioned about dropping that order, because other, everybody that's involved thought that no trespassing order was still in effect up until January 11. You know, so the question is, did the Dearborn County Commissioners receive this letter from Jason Willoughby? If you did, when did you do it? And did our Dearborn County Commissioners bring this letter up in any of the meetings? Did our Dearborn County Commissioners make this aware to our commissioners, make this aware to the Dearborn County Council members who were voting on this LIT situation, so they had full knowledge? You know, the Dearborn County Commissioners shared this letter, did they share this letter with the committee that they created to disperse the LIT fund, the one you was just talking about? And again, a little troublesome here. Why did the commissioners, who put together this committee, and how they were going to disperse the LIT money, would have on there the Dearborn County Sheriff? When the committee was aware, or should have been aware, that the Dearborn County Sheriff is responsible for removing the legitimate board members of the Dillesboro EMS and place the illegal and illegitimate group to operate the Dillesboro EMS?
Steve, can you come to a point on this?
What point is?
Normally, we were strict.
Okay.
Time for public comment. And I appreciate your comments and the background information.
Well, my whole point is.
To get to a point and end this.
My point is, is it doesn't seem like people knew about this going on. I didn't know it, I didn't know all this the last time. When I asked you about a contract, you did not have a contract with Dillesboro EMS, but you just canceled a contract with Dillesboro EMS that you didn't have in the first place. We were told in that meeting in March 12, that they were, the committee there said they would work with Dillesboro EMS. Mr. Goodman and Jared were part of that committee, and told them this would happen. Then you guys pulled the rug out from under them on March 16. You said it because of the letter you sent. The letter was not sent to a legitimate people, you contracted with the illegitimate people. You were asked by the attorney in February, when she sent you all a letter to negotiate with the legitimate board, you have yet to do that. Why? Why is Dillesboro left out in the cold? And how do you think that's going to help the county? Do you have an ambulance in Aurora right now that's about to break down, and their other one's gone? You have an ambulance in Morris Hill, the one they got, it's not running very well, and we're having trouble. Dillesboro has two brand-new ambulances, they bought and paid for theirselves. They're working to have people on this. I know that they have got people in school that are paying for theirselves, and yet you won't deal with them. So how does that help the county? And how does that help the county that you almost gave money to an illegitimate organization?
One thing you're leaving out is they only made 12% of the runs.
That's the old regime. I'm leaving out that you gave money to.
Harry was part of the old regime, he was co-captain, he's been co-captain for a long time. And, and you're misspoke, misspeaking on several, it's not a committee, it's never been a committee, it was not formally organized by the council, it was not formally organized by the commissioners, and you've been told that all the time, Steve.
But in that meeting, you called on the committee, everybody in that room called on the committee. You did at the beginning, and then when he came up and told you something, you start calling on the group.
I'd just say, so the commissioners do a lot of contracts, but there's a lot of EMS units, and they're all nonprofits. The commissioners are not privy to, or not, scholars in the bylaws for all of these different nonprofits, who the, you know, elected officers are at any given time. When the letter, the termination letter was sent to them, it was the fact that there was a question about leadership and who had executed the contract on behalf of Dillesboro was highlighted in that letter from the county to Dillesboro, right? And I'll just note, as somebody who's licensed to practice law in the state of Indiana, the letter from the attorney that Dillesboro has hired, her own letterhead says that she's not licensed in Indiana. So that's, that's an issue. I think the office that she works for has an office in Indiana, but she is not licensed in the state of Indiana. But, but the issue with the question about who was the proper leadership was highlighted in the letter.
Thanks, Steve.
I got my point, is there any way, are you all, are you even negotiating with them, or is it a dead deal?
We're discussing it with the city of Dillesboro, as to how they want to move forward.
I'm sorry?
We're discussing it with the city of Dillesboro on how they want to move forward with this issue.
Really?
That's correct.
Okay, then whatever yesterday, but that's fine.
I told you the last week that we were talking.
I know, I talked about that.
So that shouldn't be news to you.
Well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Other public comment? Hearing none, Commissioner comments?
Hope everybody enjoys the eclipse.
Break for sun?
That's all I can, I don't have anything.
They're predicting bad weather, everybody be safe.
Yeah, later this, this afternoon and this evening. We've actually been upgraded, I've been talking with Jason Sullivan, the EMS, and he is indicating that we have been upgraded to another level, so we all need to keep that in mind as, as a day progresses. So with that, motion to adjourn, Mr. Pross?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any adjournments?